Welcome to this very special hearing of the Committee on Constitutional Recognition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Peoples. My name's Julian Lysar, I'm one of the co-chairs of the committee, and I'd like to start by acknowledging the traditional owners, the Nunaw and Nanbri people, and pay respects to their elders past and present, and pay also respects to any other Indigenous people in the room, both from Australia and around the world. This is a particularly special place in the history of Australia, obviously the former House of Representatives chamber, and 20 years ago I sat where Kevin is sitting as a delegate to the Constitutional Convention, the last time we had major discussions about constitutional change in this country, so it's really wonderful to be back here today. On the committee with me is my co-chair, Senator Patrick Dodson from the Labor Party from Western Australia, Lou O'Brien, a National Party member from Queensland, Linda Burney, a Labor member from New South Wales, and Senator Rachel Seewitt, a Greens senator from Western Australia, so we are a multi-party committee. The committee was established by the Australian Parliament to progress the national recognition of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples, and our work is informed by the regional dialogues undertaken by the referendum council last year, which culminated in the Uluru Statement from the Heart. As you bear aware, the Uluru Statement recommended a First Nations voice to the Australian Parliament. Our work's also informed by the earlier work of the 2015 Parliamentary Committee and the 2012 Expert Panel on Constitutional Recognition. This hearing is being broadcast on Parliament's website, and I understand it's being broadcast live, and transcripts of the proceedings will be published on the Parliament's website as well. Those present here today are also advised that filming and recording are permitted during the hearing, and I'm also to remind members of the media who may be present or listening on the web of the need to fairly and accurately report the proceedings of the committee. This is a normal hearing of the Parliamentary Committee even though we are out of the building of the Parliament. Although the committee doesn't require you to give evidence under oath, let me say to all witnesses, I advise you that this hearing is a legal proceeding of the Parliament and therefore has the same standing as the proceedings of the respective houses. The giving of false or misleading evidence is a serious matter and may be regarded as a contempt for Parliament. The evidence given today will be recorded by hand side and attracts parliamentary privilege. Before I ask some of the international guests to make a statement, I also just want to acknowledge and thank the ANU and the other organisers of today's First Nations Governance Forum for allowing us to hold this session here as part of their conference, and also to thank the wonderful international speakers who'll be able to help us with our deliberations here. I'd like to invite delegates to, and other participants, if they're speaking to the committee, to introduce themselves prior to speaking. And what I might do is, we have four delegates who have indicated they'd like to speak to us, and I'd ask them each perhaps to make an introductory statement, and before they do so, just introduce themselves and tell us who they are and where they're from. So we might start with Daly, please, and go around the table, and then we'll put some questions, if that's okay.
Okay. First of all, I too would like to acknowledge the traditional owners of this unceded territory as well as all the other Aboriginal and Tory Strait Islanders across the land, and more power to them in relation to their unceded territory and their unceded sovereignty. My name is Daly Samwaduro, I am a professor at the University of Alaska Anchorage. I have a history of engagement at the international level, in particular in relation to the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, as well as the revision of ILO Convention Number 169, and other various different international fora. I presently teach in the Department of Political Science at UAA in the subfield of international relations, and I'm very pleased to have been invited to offer some remarks and appreciate the lack of preparation that I've had. So I'll hand the microphone off to Brian, thank you.
My name is Brian Crane, I'm a lawyer from Canada. I have a practice which is mostly Aboriginal law, and over my many years at the bar in Ottawa, I have worked on many appeals to all levels of court, including the Supreme Court of Canada, and I've also worked in the negotiation of native land claims in Canada and in the negotiation of self-government agreements.
I wondered if I passed that, I'll get the secretary to pass that. Oh, there's a microphone there, Ken, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I share the honour of sort of being on unceded Aboriginal territory here in Australia, and appreciate the chance to speak to you. My name is Ken Coates, I'm a professor of public policy at the University of Saskatchewan. I'm from Yukon in the far northern part of the country, who's one of the areas that has the most experience with modern treaties and the negotiation implementation of modern treaties, and I specialise in Indigenous rights and the implementation of treaties and constitutional arrangements in Canada.
Thank you, and I too start with expressing my gratitude to the traditional custodians and owners of this land, and that they accept me as a guest here, and I also pay my respect to elders past, present, and future, and thanks also to the committee to allow me to appear before you. My name is Mathias Orje, I come from Sweden, from the Sami people there, Rainerhöning community originally, and I'm now a professor of law at the Arctic University of Norway in Tromsø, Norway. I too have participated for many, many years in international processes on Indigenous Peoples' rights, and I'm also advocating Sami people's rights domestically, in particular when it comes to rights to land and resources. Thank you.
I might just ask a general question, and perhaps pass to Mathias and go back round, and then I'll hand over to colleagues. What do you think are the learnings from your particular jurisdiction in terms of pitfalls and strengths of the approach that's been adopted to consult and engage Indigenous people on policy in the same way that we're attempting to do with the potential voice proposal? What other learnings we can take from your about engaging and consulting Indigenous people from your mechanism in your country?
Well, I think the principal point, I would say, really to start perhaps at the bottom but at the basic, that it taken many years, I think the experience of the Sami are similar to the Aboriginal peoples of Australia, but we are now at a point where you have formal and I would say honest recognition of the Sami as Indigenous people with self-determining rights, with the right to have their voice made in all matters concerning them, including at the highest level, that we mean the Parliament and the government, and I think a general recognition among the Swedish population, if I keep to Sweden now even though we, the Sami live in four countries, that this is actually beneficial to the country as a whole, also to the Swedish population, and that there is a general understanding of that that we try to move forward, and that this is not dangerous, this is actually helpful, and really, really creating an environment where you can respect the rights, the Indigenous rights of the Sami in this case, at the same time that this need not be of detriment to the country as a whole.
I have some really quick observations. We're getting dangerously close to a culture of over-consultation in Canada. Too many committees, too many meetings, the impact on Aboriginal folks is amazing, they don't get enough time, they don't get the resources to actually prepare properly, and when you add in the sort of the financial economic resource development consultations on top of all the policy ones, it becomes a real challenge, so it has to be a question of balance. I think we have to also recognise that the thing that distinguishes Indigenous policy in Canada is consistent policy failure. There's not a lot of strong background to say, wow, aren't we lucky, we get to help develop policy. Policy has been a hammer that's been used for 150 years, and so the whole concept of being involved with policy development is something a lot of Indigenous people in Canada view with some great concern, because it's a means of control and oftentimes manipulation. That said, you will not get a substantial improvement in government policy, and that always comes from government policy without engagement. It's happening now. Canada, I think, is moving toward what I describe as a co-production of policy model, where even in the allocation of resources and budgetary considerations, there are, right now at this point, behind the scenes, an informal consultation. The policies that come out have actually been, I'd say pre-approved, pre-approved, that doesn't really capture it because there's no formal approval mechanism, but you'll find in the last couple of years in particular, the Indigenous folks have not been reacting negatively to policy formulations because they've actually been involved in developing them and in setting priorities, and I think setting priorities is perhaps as much as anything else. And so I think the final thing I would say is that in Canada, we're actually learning to trust Indigenous folks, to trust them to manage their own affairs, which has been a long time coming, trust them to make informed and useful contributions to Canada as a whole, and I think one of the things we're discovering is that Indigenous expectations around consultation are expanding beyond their immediate issues to other national issues, and that's been quite fascinating as well.
Ken, could you just explain the how in terms of consultation just before we go to...
Well, first off, the major part of consultation is having a government official show up in your community with a briefcase and a suit, and say, "I'm here to consult with you", and these are, you know, formalised meetings with communities, with bank councils and things of that sort, we have a lot of those going on. The Assembly of First Nations and the other national Indigenous organisations meet routinely with government, they used to do it in a fairly highly politicised environment, they're doing it much more in a quiet, behind-the-scenes sort of process now, and they're actually taking, there've been a series of issues on, for example, resource revenue sharing and on resource development, where they actually joined a joint committee of Indigenous Affairs in the House of Commons, and actually then with the Indigenous organisations to plan together the best way of going forward. So it exists at a whole bunch of different levels. When I talk about over-consultation, to me that means yet another government official coming to the community yet again to have another conversation. That is wearing, and the amount of, they don't have the time and resources to prepare for it. The other, the national and regional level consultations are going much, much better, and we're now, the federal government is trying to regionalise them, they've moved away from the idea there's a single national policy that will work for everywhere, and they're moving toward this idea of what, find regional groups, they might be cultural-centred, they might be geographically-centred, and those kind of more informal but very intense sort of policy development processes are, I think, proving to be quite successful.
Brian, do you want to offer?
I just wanted to say that there's a very big legal dimension to the consultation debate in Canada, and that is that in 2004, the Supreme Court, in a case called Haida, Haida people from Haida Gwaii in western British Columbia, decided that government could not approve an authorisation for a tree licence without consulting with the Aboriginal group. Prior to the Haida case, consultation had been not regarded as a legal duty but an important public policy that should be followed. In the Haida case, the Supreme Court said, "No, it is a duty, in a case where the Aboriginal group has made a claim, even though the claim may not have been resolved by the courts, even though there may be a debate as to whether it was a solid claim or not, if there is a reasonable prima facie claim, then the government has the response, and government must approve the project, then government must engage in consultation." And that rule has sort of overlaid all the consultation activity. Now, industry, and mining industry, oil and gas, natural resources, renewable resource energy, all of those projects now, industry is going directly to the communities as a first step, and is engaging in consultation in advance of the approval. And it's so, it's almost, it's now, it's built in to the approval process. All administrative tribunals have a duty to see that consultation has been done.
Is there a specific mechanism they have to use, or it's, you know, that depends on the particular people that you're consulting with, or...
Sorry, I missed...
Do they have to use a particular consultative mechanism, or it's just, it's up to the parties to determine?
I think it's regarded as a fact situation in a case-by-case basis, that if it's a taking of land, then it will require deep, extensive consultation. If it's a question of some interference in harvesting rights, fishing, hunting, gathering, some slight interference, then it may not be that sort of deep consultation, but more in the nature of giving notice, giving an opportunity to put your side of the question forward. All the land claim agreements now that are being negotiated have detailed descriptions of consultation, when it's required and when it's not required.
So what, with the consultation, can I just jump in, sorry?
A second.
With the consultation, does there need to be approval? We hear about consultation all the time, but unless there's actually a level of approval or rejection, the capacity to reject it, what...
The trigger for consultation is if, first, that the native group has rights or has asserted a claim. If government is contemplating a, or has to legally give approval to a project, then consultation is...
So can people say no, is the bottom line?
There is no veto, but if an Aboriginal group has a legal right, such as by an established treaty or a previous court case or something of that sort, then there is ineffective veto. But it's only in those cases where the right has clearly established and there is going to be some impact on that right.
That can then say no.
In that situation, consent would be required.
Terry, what can we learn from Alaska?
Thank you for the question. First of all, I think rather than taking it to the context of Alaska, let me answer the initial question that you posed about ways forward in relation to consultation. I think one of the first issues is recognising the status of the people's concern, meaning that there is clear and explicit recognition of the rights and the status of the Indigenous Peoples that you're going to engage with, just straight-up, clear recognition of the status and rights. And on the part of Indigenous Peoples, their status and rights are inherent in their status as Indigenous Peoples, as distinct Peoples. Earlier today, there was a bit of a discussion, especially in relation to the UN Special Rapporteur on Minorities, about minorities and political rights, and I think it's essential that we recognise in Australia, in the United States, in Canada, in the Philippines, in the Congo, wherever it happens to be, that Indigenous Peoples and their individual and collective rights are distinct from all others. And by this I specifically mean their political right to self-determination as a collective right. In addition, it's essential to recognise the rights of Indigenous Peoples to their lands, territories, and resources, which is quite distinct from minorities. The Special Rapporteur made a reference to numerical minorities, and I think that in relation to Indigenous Peoples, these things have to be very clear, very explicit. In addition, as far as the question is concerned, specifically consultation, there should be clear and explicit recognition that the Indigenous Peoples concerned have the right to participate in decision-making. And throughout, for example, the course of negotiating the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, we attempted to clarify that even further by inserting terms like meaningfully, effectively, directly. You get the point, that the right to participate in decision-making is essential, and earlier today, maybe you were present, I don't know, one of the panel speakers, Patrick in particular, referenced "nothing without us", that it's essential to have participation at every juncture, at every step of the way, and I don't think it's necessarily as fine-tuned as determining the legal content, but Brian has just now made reference to, on a case-by-case basis, and Ken has made reference to overwhelming Indigenous Peoples and their communities and their representatives with far too much consultation. I think these questions are really within the purview and the authority of the Peoples concerned to determine whether they are being overwhelmed with consultation. When it comes to the issue of the right to free prior and informed consent, I think it is much better for us to think of this in terms of a discussion, a dialogue, a negotiation, and the ability and the capacity of the Indigenous Peoples concerned to either give their consent or withhold their consent. I don't think that it's really necessarily accurate to utilise the term veto, but maybe Brian can also tell us a little bit more about the Chilkotin case in relation to the rights of Indigenous Peoples to their lands, territories, and resources, and how free prior and informed consent is triggered and has been elucidated by the court to apply to a wide range of things, but I just want to caution about the use of the term veto, because that's not referenced, for example, in the UN Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, and I think it was the Indigenous Peoples concerned in that particular case who had to point that out. Sorry to be long-winded about it, but I think these are essential elements in terms of moving forward as far as a dialogue and negotiation and discussion with Indigenous Peoples here or elsewhere.
Thank you all for sharing those opening statements and being with us today. I mean, obviously, the task of this committee, of the Parliament, of both Houses or parties, is an incredibly complex one, incredibly complex, and we will make recommendations, and then it will be a debate within the Parliament as to where things go. What I would like to ask you is something fairly specific. If we're talking about responding to the Uluru Statement, which essentially called for, the only thing it called for in terms of constitutional reform was within the Australian Constitution, a voice to the Parliament of First Peoples would be established. Constitutions in this country are notoriously difficult to get up, so my question is, what would you respond to with saying, "Well, we'll go to have a referendum, it could be lost, or it could be successful", versus the idea, but you can't get rid of the voice, versus the idea of a legislated body? So either constitutional reform, which might or might not be successful, or a legislated body within the Parliament, which can be done away with, with a change of government or minister, and we've had that experience.
Well, first, I'm mostly here to offer my experience within law, and this is more of a strategic question for Australia, I think, but if I should still make an attempt, coming here and being informed on this whole event, and then I don't mean this committee meeting, but the conference, and the strong focus on constitutional change, I was thinking in the same lines that, taking the Nordic countries as an example, I think suddenly it would have been, we have constitutional recognition in Sweden, Norway, and Finland of the Sami, in various ways, in Sweden as a people, in Finland as an Indigenous people, and in Norway, more, in a more cloudy language, but in Sweden and Finland, explicit recognition of the Sami as a people.
Within the constitution?
In the constitution. And I would strongly recommend that, because I think that has, or I don't think, I know, that that has legal implications under law, as with the status of people come the right to self-determination, to be implemented through certain forms of autonomy, which would, by definition, have a direct relationship with the Australian main government and Parliament. But I think it would be a bit difficult, because, as I would say, that's what I would recommend, and I think what the Aboriginal people of Australia are entitled to under law. Politically, in the Nordic countries also, perhaps would be difficult to move directly from a relatively low point to constitutional recognition and probably the world legislation and so on to similar effects before that. These legislation will never repeal, they are still there, then it was just confirmed strongly by a constitutional change to have this kind of recognition, or rather, the basis of why we have Sami Parliaments, that have autonomy power, that have a direct, through law, established link, how they deal with the Government and Parliament of Sweden, Norway, Finland, and so on, that is not out in a law, and that happened before, and then came the constitutional recognition of the Sami as a people, as an Indigenous people, because that is really what these laws and the Sami Parliaments, the establishment of the Sami Parliament as organs through which the Sami people exercise autonomy within the constitutional systems of Sweden, Finland, and Norway, and so on, but with a formalised relationship with the government, the Swedish government, the Swedish Parliament, and so on. And I think there might be some kind of system that you want to look at, because as I said, there are clear similarities between the situation of the Sami and the situation of the Aboriginal Peoples in Australia. But the law with the Parliaments and the, how this work in practical way came first, then came the constitutional recognition to say, this is really what this is established on, the recognition of the Sami as an Indigenous people.
Very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to be really quick. First off, remember in Canada, we have a whole suite of Supreme Court decisions, we've referred to them already, that have had a huge impact on changing the conversation in our country, and they continue to add to them, so First Nations people keep winning most of the court cases. Having the constitutional protection has been of huge importance in Canada, because it signifies their real participation in the country in a sort of a guaranteed way, their modern treaties and things like that are constitutionally protected, it gives real substance, and for Indigenous folks, I'm not Indigenous myself, for Indigenous folks, they put an awful lot of emphasis on the fact that they have those kinds of guarantees. In the reality world of sort of, if you couldn't have a constitutional amendment, would you go for the legislative step? I would go for the legislative step, but I would not just create a sort of an administration of poverty model, where you create some sort of a bureaucracy that just manages Indigenous affairs. If you can create a legislative step that actually has real authority and real engagement in that co-production of policy model, I think it's really important. So it's sort of a balance of those kinds of things. It'd be terrible not to get the constitutional change, but it would be even worse to lose it.
I just wanted to make the quick comment that with regard to a reference in the Constitution
as one of the, I mean, the central pivotal instrument, would allow for the opportunity as it has in Canada and the United States, despite the wording and the reference within the US Constitution to Indian nations, it's fairly limited, it would at least afford the wording in the Constitution to transcend all areas, executive, legislative, and judicial, and I think this is something that would be very important for all day-to-day matters concerning Indigenous Peoples here in Australia. And the other thing I think is important to say is that this committee and your mandate, that the opportunity to be as comprehensive as possible, and through, for example, this conference, cataloguing the various different approaches, and being cohesive... conference, cataloguing the various different approaches and being coherent in that regard is an important exercise, and to think beyond the Constitution or legislative body. I fully appreciate what individuals have said with regard to the difficulties and the history here. But societies can change, and so the opportunity to be comprehensive now may, in fact, trigger change that is vital and progressive and positive in the future.
The government of Canada attempted in the 1980s to have another amendment to the Constitution to guarantee the Aboriginal right to self-government. That went to a referendum, and for various political reasons, it was defeated. At that point, the politicians laid down their tools and said, not in this generation. But what they did do is the government adopted a policy called the self-government policy, which said that the government was prepared to negotiate self-government arrangements. And there was a whole suite of alternatives that were set out in that document, and listing some powers that could not be transferred to an Indigenous government, and some powers that could be discussed, and others that certainly must be transferred. So there was an approach there of a menu of options. And that policy has resulted in a large number of self-government agreements. And those agreements have ranged from what might be called a local municipal model, which would add culture and language and Indigenous values to what was a local government, to a regional government, to particular arrangements in the sectors, such as education or health management, which would be done on a tribal basis or a regional basis. And it has also resulted in mixed models, which have an element of public government in them, and so that if the residents of the community have non-Aboriginal people, those people would have a vote for the local council. So there's a lot of options out there, and that is, so there is no legislation, except at the end of the process. At the end of the process, the self-government agreement can be approved by parliament and given treaty status. So at the end of the process, it has become recognised constitutionally on an individual case.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for making yourselves available. It's really valuable for us to get first-hand information from people like yourselves in the field and working across this field. I've got a couple of questions. As people who've come to Australia, what do you see has been the impact of the two High Court cases of Mabo and Wick, if you're familiar with them, that have really challenged our sense of territorialious in this nation-state, Mabo particularly, and Wick, of course, setting up the capacity to have a concurrent right with pastoralist holdings, but yielding. But what do you see as, if you're familiar with those cases, if you're not, I'll move on to something else, but what do you see with those cases, looking at Australia's political fabric, any evidence of us responding to that in the way that your nation-states seem to have done in relation to you, to First Nations? I'm not sure, there's a question for Brian or Matthias, or anyone of yours.
I can be very brief. I am not familiar very well with the Wick case, I will not speak to that, but somewhat with the Mabo, at least, and obviously, as has been spoken to by many before during these two days, have been a very critically important principle case, getting rid of this territorialious principle and so on, and acknowledging that Australia was indeed inhabited and subject to rights before the English population arrived. So very principally important case, but I further understand, in my reading, that the problem with it is that it's loaded with caveats that makes it not as important from a practical perspective, when you have this burden of proof, very high burden of proof on establishing customary law existing at the time of colonisation and existing still today. I mean, that's an enormous burden of proof for any community to do. So its practical relevance, I think, is limited quite severely with those caveats. And I would remind that under international law or customary law that's applied in Australia, basically what is needed is simply traditional use, traditional use of the land by the community, without having to go through this process of proving this existence of customary law. So I would hope that Australian courts and so on would go in that direction, in line with the international law. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So really quickly, I've been down in Australia a lot, and mostly in the Northern Territory and Western Australia over the time, and absolutely astonished at how little Mabo has affected policy and action, just in comparison to the Canadian context, which I think Senator was your question. You think that Mabo should have been one of these things that just changed the way people see the world, and changes just have ripple effects through the society. Just to do a comparison, you mentioned Taku and Haida, the two agreements in 2000, two court decisions in 2004. They changed the way the resource industry in Canada operates profoundly. And actually, most people who act under them have never read them. They say, okay, we have to de-cconsult, that's part, and accommodate, which means that even the slightest problem for the communities has to be addressed through financial compensation, additional land, jobs, employment, et cetera, et cetera. We now have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of agreements between Aboriginal communities and resource companies as a consequence of those two decisions. And what I heard of, I used to know, I knew Henry Reynolds, who was involved with the Mabo decision very extensively, and the hopes and expectations behind Mabo were just right through the roof. And I've been really surprised that they haven't been internalised, that people haven't looked at those and said, this really does change the fabric of the country. And again, the surprise comes mostly from what happened in Canada, because those decisions have been transformative, and we've sort of taken it as a guide, so, okay, we took the wrong path, let's go down this way.
I think, just quickly, the denunciation of territorialious as a doctrine, that it signaled high hopes for everyone. And the other footnote to this is that though it had immediate impact here, let's not forget the borrowing of jurisprudence by countries across the globe, and the real danger of that as well. As an outside observer, the denunciation, but also the opportunity to create a wedge as far as native title is concerned, from afar, I simply saw the legislative diminishment of the case, that you had the decision, and then the opportunity for it to just be legislated away and diminished phenomenally from my point of view. And I would agree with what Matthias Aaron has said about the high standards set when we're talking about inherent rights and title to land. So from afar, it was actually a bit akin to some of the developments in Alaska, where, in fact, it was somewhat a reverse of some of the developments in Alaska in relation to the question of Indian country, that in the Vinatay decision, the Ninth Circuit Court found in favour of Alaska Native people, and instantly, the Congress and others were trying to figure out, how can we legislate this out of existence? Which then suggests a really politically volatile arena.
Absolutely.
Maybe this other question's probably a bit more mundane, in the sense that this challenge of recognition, I think, Daly, you touched on it earlier, but it was also touched on there, I guess, from New Zealand earlier, of the experience of the parliament and Maori representation in the parliament. How do you deal with the question of why should First Nations peoples have an independent position to the parliament of a sovereign nation? We're often confronted in this committee by people who say, well, why should First Nations have an independent position? We've heard from Professor Charles Worth earlier about the nature of some comments made in her speech, but we're probably still at first base on some of this, as to why should First Nations people even have a voice to the parliament, let alone entrenching it in the Constitution? Why should they have a voice to the parliament? And if so, should that voice be deliberative, that is, have impact, or should it just be advisory?
Why, I think, first, and both special rapporteurs, I think, spoke to this this morning also, that the law, international law, has changed that effect. We used to have an international law provided for political institutional rights only to bodies coming out of the state, and that meaning then the institutions or peoples understood as the aggregate populations of states. That has changed, and particularly so with regard to Indigenous peoples, that now we have an understanding of people in international law where peoples need not only be understood in the terms of aggregate population of states, but also populations that constitute subsegments of states, and that is definitely established with regard to Indigenous peoples, for instance, by the Declaration of Rights of Indigenous Peoples, meaning that the Aboriginal peoples of Australia have this right. They have a right to exercise their wishes and so on for the future, not only as citizens of Australia, and through the political institutions available to all Australians, but through bodies particular to them, through which they exercise their right to self-determination in an autonomous way. And as I said before, that would necessarily have to include a direct relationship with the political institutions of Australia as such. International law is not so clear as to exactly how this relationship should be, exactly what should be the mandate of this autonomous body of the First Nations. But that there is a right to such a body or bodies, that is clear. And I think that from that follows an obligation of Australia to start to examine what this relationship should be. What is this body that the First Nations have or bodies, and what should be the relationship with the state bodies? That is an obligation that Australia have, and I think the call coming from the Aboriginal peoples show that there's a clear desire for such an institutional change, and that the fact that it's not yet established is causing grievances. And when the right is there, I think there is also the obligation follows for Australia to start examining and go down this path sooner rather than later. And then, as to exactly what would be the structure, the mandate, and so on, I cannot speak to, and I think there is limited guidance to get from international law, but that the body, that the Aboriginal peoples are entitled to this body, and that it should be there in some kind, I think is clear, and I think it would be advisable to start this process.
I would add as well that to not address the political right to self-determination of Indigenous peoples here or anywhere else means that we'll continue to live with the distortion of history. And by that, I mean, as I was saying earlier, in relation to the right to participate, just on the basis of the distinct legal status of Indigenous peoples as peoples, with the political right to self-determination as understood in international law and its equal application. Vicky Talley-Corpus and her panel presentation spoke about some of the background and history in order to achieve Article III of the UN Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. And so it's the accuracy of history, number one, but number two, through the articulation of the right to self-determination and its clear and explicit application to Indigenous peoples as peoples, really became a matter of racial discrimination. And Member States that wanted to diminish or qualify it in that context were practising racial discrimination. Indigenous peoples won the day on that issue. The UN Declaration and Article III is the same language found in Article I of the International Covenants, it is the same reference as the principle iterated in the United Nations Charter and the 1970 Declaration concerning friendly relations between states, which then also invokes criteria by which governments, states, and we didn't have a hand in creating this 1970 Declaration, we weren't there, right? We weren't present when the UN Charter was being drafted. We had no hand in the 1970 Declaration. Governments set for themselves, as well as the International Covenants, we didn't have a hand in the writing of that. Governments set for themselves, especially in the 1970 Declaration concerning friendly relations, criteria by which they can exercise the right to self-determination, including the recognition of the right to peoples within their territory. And this is what the big debate of Article 46 of the UN Declaration became about. But as Indigenous peoples, we ensured that elsewhere in the UN Declaration, there were provisions that balanced the language. We, in fact, were the only intellectually honest representatives at the table when it came down to this debate. And so I'm probably giving too much voice to your mundane question, but the recognition of the right to self-determination and its attachment to Indigenous peoples in Australia or elsewhere is a matter of equality, it is a quest for equality. And the opportunity to have independent bodies and political institutions that are responsive to the desires and aspirations and the rights of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders would begin to correct and remove this distortion of history that we've all experienced.
Yeah, just really quickly, the First Nations and Ateen and Inuit people in Canada have very different opinions. This isn't a matter of huge conversation in Canada, but basically, it comes down to this. There are some folks who favour what they used to call the 11th province, that Indigenous people should be brought together into some sort of a provincial-like status that would cover the whole country and draw them together in one sense. There's another group of Indigenous folks who think that active engagement in partisan politics is the right way to go. There are probably between 12 and 15 writings in the country that could be swayed by active Indigenous engagement in the national political process, which 10 years ago, they didn't vote very much. It was said the whole political process was so far removed from their life, they didn't think it was very valuable. Now they're getting more heavily involved. And so some people say, let's do this. And if you have a chance to meet Julie Wilson-Rebo, who's the Minister of Justice from Canada, she's Aboriginal from British Columbia, powerful, powerful person, and she makes a strong case, let's get inside the system and change it sort of from the inside. The third thing I would say, though, is that the modern treaties in Canada have really changed the conversation about what's possible and how you can proceed. So, for example, all the modern treaties guarantee Aboriginal representation, a fixed percentage on almost all the major decision-making bodies, particularly in the Yukon Northwest Territories, none of it separate because it's an Inuit-controlled jurisdiction. And so you have sort of a And so you have sort of a minimum of 40%, 40%, Brian, right, is it, representation on things like the Water Development Boards and the Economic Planning Boards and things of that sort?
Usually 50%.
50%. So you have guaranteed representation on the committees and the processes that lead up to formal decision-making. And so in one sense, in these environments, you have such heavy engagement of Indigenous people in local governments and regional authorities that the separate status seems kind of unnecessary. And the transformation of the last 40 years in these northern environments has been unbelievable, with Indigenous people brought right into the formal decision-making process in a way that you're not seeing it happen in the South yet, although if you sign more treaties in the South, it will probably change there as well.
Chris Lue, Brian?
Yes. Quite a basic question, and it probably in some ways comes from my lack of knowledge in relation to your, where you're from and your experiences, but our task for this committee, one of our many tasks, is to come up with something that is achievable in terms of a referendum. Australians are very pragmatic people, and broader Australia, I think, I'm sure, want to see high levels of disadvantage in Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities improved. We have targets in closing the gap on education, health, and employment. With your experience in relation to constitutional recognition and legal precedent in your geographical areas, have you, is it the case that you've had disadvantage like we have here, and has it improved? And can you speak to me about that and give me examples of the improvement?
Well, I could attempt a bit of an answer on this, in this way, that if the change is measured in terms of a generation, there is indication of improvements. The problem is one partly of resources and of training. We have the, in the, we have a whole territory, Nunavut, which is Inuit-dominated in terms of population, and so, but is, there is still a great deal of poverty, there's dislocation of communities, and there is, it's a long, long process. One of the commitments that was made in the land claim agreement for Nunavut was that the public service would have a target of, I forget what it was, 45%, something like that, of Inuit in the public service. And that was not achieved. And they had more white faces around the bureaucracy, and they weren't able to get the people. And that is an issue, a function of resources, but it's also an intergenerational thing. And there are communities that are weakened. So whatever scale you use, it's going to be a long, long program. But they are making the decisions themselves. The Inuit government is making the decisions and is running the territory. And there's no reason why that model can't be used anywhere.
Thank you. Two examples come to mind in relation to the Indian Child Welfare Act and retaining children, Indigenous children, Alaska Native children within our communities. We have a really complicated history just by virtue of the Alaska Native Claims Settlement Act, yet our traditional councils and our tribal governments persist and continue, in part by virtue of an amendment to the 1934 Indian Reorganization Act in 1936, made applicable to Alaska Native tribes and traditional councils. And just in relation to retaining children within the community, which I understand to be a serious issue here, as well as across Indigenous homelands, we've seen marked improvement as well as surprisingly acceptance by the State of Alaska as a political subdivision of the United States government, recognizing the role and the place of the tribal courts, the Indigenous courts. And some of these tribal courts operate and function on the basis of their traditional laws and protocol. And the one and best example that I have is in the community of Bethel in southwest Alaska, which is actually a huge village in contrast to other areas. They rewrote their tribal code on the basis of Yupik law and tradition and protocol. They then sought the best provisions in the federal law of the Indian Child Welfare Act. They then borrowed also from the Convention on the Rights of the Child and updated their code on the basis of all available information out there related to child custody and retention of children. But their most important and pivotal piece of material for this code was their own law and protocol that's embedded in their own Yupik language. And that has been, that's just one community, and there are other communities where civil jurisdiction has meant a great deal and caused, I think, dramatic change. Of course, problems persist, and it needs tinkering and adjustment, but that in and of itself is quite significant and an important expression of internal self-government, internal autonomy, internal self-determination. The second area that I'll cite, which I actually am quite critical of because it led to the morphing of what was formerly nonprofit health corporations into so-called tribal entities by the federal government. Nevertheless, to this day, and since this morphing of these entities into tribal entities, which I object to, I think it's kind of oversight and prescription that government shouldn't be involved in because of the right of self-determination. Nevertheless, they now, this linkage of these tribal entities provides the healthcare services and state-of-the-art healthcare services for all of the Alaska Native population across our entire state, and runs a budget now certainly in excess of $100 million a year to provide essential healthcare services. This also means, though, that we still have problems in our rural areas where there are no healthcare centers. But through telemedicine and other avenues, hopefully this dynamic will change as well. But I point to those two things as examples where recognition of the right of self-determination and recognition that Indigenous peoples have the capacity and don't need the capacity training that we often find foundations willing to support and everything have been a success and have been a marked success.
Okay. Yes, really, my first observation would be that a lot of the changes that I've talked about actually come as a result of the Constitutional, Section 35, inclusion of Indigenous rights. Without that, a lot of these things wouldn't happen. But first thing, come visit, we'll show you, and you'll see that the communities are divided. Some of them are doing very well and some of them doing very poorly. We have some very severe socioeconomic crises. We have a problem of endemic suicide, epidemic suicide, where suicide rates eight to 10 times the national average in Indigenous communities, and it is a huge crisis. So, second thing, without any change, the gap will get worse. If you don't fix this now and move toward a positive constructive, the only thing I can guarantee is it'll get worse. There's no evidence in Canada that our former policies were leading to sort of major improvements. There's lots of evidence that Indigenous empowerment leads to significant improvements. One example, in the early 1970s, there were less than 1,000 Aboriginal people at all Canadian colleges and universities. There's now 30,000. And a lot of that is driven by communities that are investing their own money, oftentimes millions of dollars a year to get their young people into post-secondary education. It's a hard thing. Don't expect a panacea. You don't pass a constitutional change and see everything get better the next day. Ryan mentioned this, it's a multi-generational, it took hundreds of years to cause the problem. It's going to take generations to sort of get out of it. Couple of things, though, more focused. Indigenous business development is going through the roof. It's one of the fastest-growing parts of the Canadian economy, a lot of it directed right back to Section 35 of the Constitution and the kind of process we've talked about right now. Job creation, particularly in the resource sector, is quite dramatic, and the resource sector kind of ironically is the front lines of reconciliation. It isn't happening in urban coffee shops. It's actually happening in mines where the Indigenous people are getting, nothing wrong with urban coffee shops, my wife spends most of her life there. But, you know, the job-
Some of us represent places like that.
So, the job creation side is really important. That's actually starting to change the internal dynamics of communities in a whole bunch of ways. Consultation, as came out of these arrangements, did not stop economic activity. There is this great fear that, boy, if you empower Aboriginal folks, no roads will get built, no pipelines will get built, all these kinds of things. It hasn't happened. There's been, Aboriginal people have difference of opinions on these projects, as everybody else does, but it hasn't ground everything to a halt, which is very important. We now have a situation where Indigenous communities have billions of dollars of investable assets that did not exist in the mid-1980s. As a result of a whole series of processes sparked by Section 35, including resource revenue sharing, they have billions of dollars of investable assets. And one of the great things watching, they're buying back their land piece by piece by piece and taking economic control, which is a phenomenal transformation that has long-term, long-term significance.
Yeah, very briefly, yes, specifically to the question, thank you. In the Nordic countries, the Sarmi situation is not that the Sarmi population is socially or economically disadvantaged. It's not. So the Constitution provisions that exist there are not geared toward that. It's geared toward the other kind of discrimination that you want to be different, to ensure that the Sarmi can pursue their way of life, speak their kind of language, and so on. So that is not the Constitution, it's towards the other side of discrimination. And I would say if a group, as it seems to be the case, have for a long time been seriously socially, economically disadvantaged, and there are no improvements, I would agree that I don't think a constitution will fix that. It's not a constitutional problem, it would seem to me. It's probably a worse kind of problem, that it's not a constitutional change that is needed, it's a mind change when it comes to address when a country allows a certain part of the population to be disadvantaged, that kind of such a long period of time. There are different kind of change, I would think. I have a final question from Senator Seawood.
Thank you. Ken, you touched on truth-telling, and that was one of the components, or is one of the components of our statement. I'm pretty certain Canada's had a process of truth-telling, Truth and Justice Commission. Can I ask how effective was that a useful exercise and how important was it in part of the journey?
So Canada had a process called Truth and Reconciliation. It focused on residential schools. We have a second one underway right now on missing and murdered Indigenous women. The first one exceeded everybody's expectations, the second one sadly has been engulfed in a whole bunch of controversy, although it's still proceeding. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission met with people all across the country, probably talked about their experience in residential schools. There were big public fora where there would often be hundreds and hundreds of non-Indigenous people coming and sitting and listening to Indigenous folks talk about their experience in residential schools. There was a formal apology, there was also, I think it's two and a half billion dollars, Brian, does that sound about right, in terms of total compensation for people who were victimized in the residential schools? It's interesting, it came out with 92 recommendations, and the one thing I would say to anybody on any committee is don't have 92 recommendations. Maybe two, maybe three, but you get to 92, nobody pays a stuff paying attention. But the federal government has then announced when it was elected, so we're going to implement all 92. And a bunch of us said, oh, please don't say that, because you can't afford to do it, and you won't do it. And so now they're admitting that they can't afford to do it, and they won't do it. And so it's one of those interesting things where one of the biggest problems we have with governments that turn too fast the other direction is they raise the expectations very high. However, reconciliation has become part of the national dialogue. People talk about it all the time, in schools, in hospitals, they talk about it in the police force, they have, they talk about it in universities, everybody is talking about what role people can play in reconciliation. Comes back to Matthias' point here about changing the conversation and making the non-Arrogant people responsible, quite frankly, it could be truth-telling, about the racism that is an inherent part of Canadian society. And by getting the reconciliation conversation out there, I think it's had a fairly positive effect in actually changing the way people talk about Indigenous issues.
Just to, on the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, two points. One is, I think it was the last recommendation was directed at business, and that there should be an actual attempt with business to deal with social aspects of the employment and so forth. And that is, was taken up by the Mining Council or the Canadian Mining Association in Canada and accepted as a platform for action. So even though it was one out of 94, they were prepared to do something with that. The second observation is that the present investigation into the murder and missing Aboriginal women, which is the one that was being talked about, is torn by a lot of difficulties. Some of these are because of the personalities involved, but it also has experienced the pressure from family communities, from family members, from family groups, that they need to tell their story. And this has created a lot of pressure to get it done, done in a reasonable timeframe. And there's been resignations from it, there's all sorts of political pressure. But the government has agreed, in the most recent reaction to their demand for another two years, the government has agreed to give them another six months, and that, I merely mention this as an illustration, there is enormous desire on the part of many families to have, to tell their stories. And it's a political reality. In a way, you're turning the tap on, it's sort of uncontrolled, but at the same time, the public itself is getting to realize that the missing, the missing women are people and need to be taken into account. They need to be on our radar. Why were there so many unsolved cases in the police system, you know?
Danny, if you just, let me, Max, 30 seconds-
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that as, I was called as an expert witness to the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Inquiry, a national inquiry, and there were in, as Brian has said, there were in excess of 500 individuals and families that still hadn't had the opportunity to testify. Nevertheless, I think that it, the establishment of the inquiry and setting aside the lack of a substantive extension of their mandate has drawn a spotlight that is sorely needed. And these numbers, these numbers are not confined to the national inquiry in Canada. They are across the Arctic, I know that for certain, and my guess is that they exist elsewhere for Indigenous women and girls.
Can I thank you all for your attendance today? I think what has been particularly interesting is that First Nations people face similar histories in dealing with European peoples, that the challenges that they face are similar, that there are different approaches. There is, as Ken says, no panacea, but Matthias' point about the importance of changing minds, I think, is at the heart of what we're trying to do. So, thank you all for your attendance here, and I declare this publicly enclosed. Thank you.[1791.15][1791.15][applause][1792.15]